To remind the Planning Commission, as well as anyone in the audience, that the Planning Commission is reviewing this application pursuant to Section seventeen point three two of the zoning ordinance, which is an ordinance adopted in January of this year, twenty five. It's a compatible renewable energy ordinance in compliance with Public Act two thirty-three. And therefore, there's very limited standards that the Planning Commission can review this application in terms of in section seventeen point through two point three of your ordinance. These are the things that the Planning Commission can consider. You have to look at the setbacks and the setbacks must meet the following. At least three hundred feet from the nearest point on the outer wall of any occupied community building and dwellings on non-participating properties. At least fifty feet from the nearest edge of a public road right of way. At least fifty feet from the nearest shared property line with non-participating parcels. Fencing for the project should apply to the latest version of the National Electrical Code. And so we know what those requirements are. Solar panel components shall not exceed twenty-five feet in height above ground when the rays are at full tilt. The solar energy facilities shall not generate a maximum sound in excess of fifty-five average lead decibels as modeled at the nearest outer wall of the nearest dwelling located on adjacent non-participating property. The solar energy facility should implement dark sky friendly lighting solutions and the solar energy facility shall comply with any more stringent requirements if adopted by the Michigan Public Service Commission. So because this is a compatible renewable energy ordinance as defined by Public Act two thirty-three, your authorities and what you can consider in approving this project are limited to these these five factors or five or six factors I just listed. Additionally, in your ordinance, the applicant has the right under section seventeen seventeen point thirty-two point six to offer voluntary additional standards or conditions that they will offer to you voluntarily. And in this case, there have been several that the applicant has offered. You can discuss those as you move through this analysis. But again, those are voluntary. And lastly, under seventeen point thirty-two point seven, there's a requirement for a community host agreement of two thousand dollars a megawatt of nameplate capacity that has to, we have to enter the community host agreement memorializing that and that shall be done before commencement of any operation of the project. So those are the factors and the standards you are considering. It is not as robust a consideration as you would have had previously under your prior ordinance, but because of Public Act two thirty-three and because the county has adopted a compatible renewable energy ordinance, your ability to review and consider this project has been limit somewhat limited. So I just wanted to provide that explanation. And now I'll give you back the mic and let you continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me now? All right, Mr. Chairman, ladies and commissioners, members of the public. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Michael Tourist, Director of Planning in Shippensburg County. As many, if not all, of you recall, we had a public hearing regarding the divorce on July sixth. This presentation that I'm coming to offer is going to be, or is much more abbreviated just to go over sort of the broad strokes, if you focus on draft condition approval. Now, this call is an application where you request for approval of an application site plan for solar energy. So again, I'm going to go over sort of the broad characteristics of the project. At this point, maybe the unfamiliar is proposed in Grand Township, of course. The project site is private, seventeen hundred acres, and it is located in southern city of Shippensburg. It is proposed one hundred and ten megawatt solar PV or photovoltaic energy generation facility that would include ground mounted PV arrays, at least privately owned land, thirty-two parcels of privately owned land. Now, the solar facility itself would encompass approximately ten acres of seventeen hundred acre private site. It is proposed to be completed in a single phase, beginning in two thousand and twenty-seven, with completion approximately twelve, I think, I know, twelve to eighteen months for the applicant and proposed to be operational by twenty twenty-eight. The anticipated useful lifespan of the proposed project is thirty-five years, after which the project would be repowered or decommissioned. Now, this is the site plan that shows the max proposed design by U D P Renewables for the Northern Waters Solar Park. I won't belabor this at this point again. My total intent of tonight is to go over findings of fact and proposed draft condition approval. And I am going to skip over the next several slides, which focused on Public Act two thirty-three, as well as section seventeen thirty-two of our zoning ordinance, which was in one eighty-six. Our civil counselor, Miss Goff, identified that it was approved by the county board of commissioners. So for the sake of brevity, I'm going to skip over those. Our civil counselor did a fine job explaining. Quickly, as far as general property characteristics, there were two substations proposed to sell the Flint Lakes Road. There is also an operation maintenance building that would be constructed near the overhead electric railway. Your raise would be imposed by fencing approximately twenty-five individual PV arrays, if you will. Each would be fenced by a minimum of a sub type of fencing. And there is a waiver requested, given that the project, the sheer size of the project, it would not present very well without required for his zoning ordinance, which is planned and drawn at one inch or less scale. So that is a waiver requested. So at this point, I'm leaving it to the Planning Commission discussing the questions for the slide on the screen. And afterwards, I'd like to discuss draft condition approval. So, Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Okay, the third presentation that the D D P wants to make tonight. We don't have any additional information than what we presented at the experience. But we wanted to come here and be ready to answer if there were any questions that you had. So we make a subtle.
Okay, thank you. My action.
Yes. Question for you, could you respond from response? The key you got, which this three conditions you wish to have changed. There, I don't see how to get three out of this two or maybe three, number three. But can you give us your reasoning for these?
Thank you, microphone outside the zoning lady's council for the D D P. The, so there's, you're right, it's three, but hey, it's stubborn. There's no room, sorry about that. But yeah, there's two categories of condition we're looking at. One is just with respect to the time, the lifespan or expiration of the permits to the potential of having a safe plan, such as the land use. Both on your ordinance, they're on, they'll shut, they're shown alike. Both have a meeting for being extended. And with these projects, the way that they get developed and the way they get constructed have very long runways and timelines, kind of like little, if somebody came in here and built a, a city, I say, they're probably break ground and off the run. That's a little different with these utilities, you know, solar facilities. And due to now the construction process and procurement of materials, but also they have the weeds, issues with waiting in line to interconnect and the different and so having, there's standing components as well, many of which outside of their control. So we just know from the gate, it's fair to speak further about it, that the construction, no, until point twenty-seven, just if everything kind of goes along, you know, for the world. And so that was the reason for the request for the extension of the life of the permits, which I sent over to your council today. Your, your ordinance allows for these extensions, both administrative or through the planning commission, for to have the one twelve month extension from the administrator, zoning administrator, or the twelve extensions from the planning commission's administrator, to do that all at once. Go ahead on that part. And just to add a little bit about the issues. So very specific, so during the Q division back in twenty twenty-one, and we expect to get what's called G I A, the Interconnection Agreement, back by the end of this year. And then there's a timeline by which the utility needs to give us the, it needs to construct the upgrades. And if for whatever reason they're delayed, then we can't interconnect. And so we were thinking, well, if they go absolutely as fast as they possibly can, starting construction at the, you know, July, August, twenty twenty-seven is feasible. But if they're delayed at all, then we have to sit there and wait. And we don't want to put equipment out on site before we can actually interconnect the back speed to the, to the project. So that was, that was the reason, something that's out of our control. And then the second question. That, that was the plan especially, and then the third question. Minor changes to site plan over time during the construction process. And the rationale, well, start with your ordinance has to process for minor changes and major changes to approve the site plan. And with these products, with these sides and scales, the panel area being remedied. It's only a count, the lane, as long as you know, what we're helping create to the route and rocks. So what ends up happening is these projects get modified, you know, a range of controls. It's going to be in one spot, they find a hole, it moves, it moves ground, it moves twenty feet to the east. And so, and that's just, right? Cost of, ten, go, fix the whole range or something like. So what we try and do, and we have just done, the projects probably same, is to define what are made or change to a road or a mountain, because your ordinance talks to minor restrictions, but it's really the context and building houses, normal commercial buildings here. So what we try to do is make something in that allows a moment of flexibility in project design and construction, but also includes guardrails and safeguards that don't allow anything to turn to, like, corner test in this right here, this is not the best, it's always the best. Which is kind of the maximum design, that's the maximum goal they could possibly do. Those outer walls, the fence line of it, will say that you can never expand those. You can only shake it. It's straight, making certain, I've heard some, you have to comply with your license. Uh, you know, you can't, uh, comply with your conditions. And all you're allowed to do is move the pieces inside. Fence, shake. And you're just really instant credibility to move things within the fence of the project, which I don't believe in, the real nice people that are nearby. Any questions about that potential? These outside of this, these have a puzzle, these fill in a puzzle outside first, and the other pieces to move around. The outer border never moves, totally shake. And this gives them freedom to move the pieces inside, based on the land they find, once they get out there and start running. There's no, there's none. So that's the reasoning, the happy answer question.
So you're agreeing basically to keep the street, the fence areas as they are presented in your site plan and the sheets, the individual sheets?
Yes, hundred percent.
And that's what you're considering, minor changes, anything within those fences?
Yeah, inside the project, exactly. And the fences never get close to the road, never get close to the rest of that. Nothing moves closer to anybody. We still have to comply with all sound, that we have agreed to in the conditions, we still have to agree to.
That twenty-five fence areas, pretty low square meters, will that, that would be a major.
Well, unless you show the fence could get far enough. Pre setback, so let's say it's, right now it's a hundred, and the way the project fits, it's two hundred. Am I right in my opinion? If it went to ninety-nine, it's, it's one foot in the wrong direction, major change. Anything else that creates, yes, yes.
No. Okay, I had another problem. In your section six of the upper left-hand corner, you had a problem with small triangular area. I caught that quite some time ago. And really, I don't, I think it was just a mistake on the part of the designation of that triangle as being excluded. It's part of that parcel, which you have already leased. And the problem is that with the designation of it as a restricted area, you don't need the setback for that little solar array on the next parcel to the east, or to be up to the east. All you have to do is submit a new site plan sheet and delete that little triangle, and you've eliminated your problem.
Yes.
So I would propose that one of our conditions would be that you have to submit a new revised site plan, that particular one, showing the removal of that triangle. And then I have the problem for.
Yeah, I know, Mr. Tourist, about this stuff. I told him we'd be happy to take that on as a condition to fix that site plan sheet, because it is, as a measure, an exclusion and still needs, so still consider participating. You know, setback wouldn't apply, so, yeah.
I've got that to give.
And then, Mr. Chairman, please. A slide, that's, it's, it's, one of the body areas, showing property of western.
Don't think the top center of the, of the graphic.
Yeah, bring it back there. It's one about that. Unfortunately, I only have this square. You don't have a very small number that I can point with the. Well, I'll read the, I'll read the proposed condition I've got. The applicant shall submit a revised sheet, C one oh three, of the site plan, exhibit five, correct the erroneous designation of small triangular area quarter of the northeast corner of parcel number one five one dash zero zero six, one hundred dash zero zero four dash zero zero, as the excluding area for non-solar facilities. And thereby negating the setback requirements for the, this panel for the solar array parcel number one five one zero zero six two hundred five. Yeah, I think, Chair, you have a problem on that.
Yep.
Okay, let's get it.
Anyone else?
I think we should decide whether we're going to go with that. Three proposed conditions. I have no problem personally with the changes within the twenty-five fence areas, wood within the footprint of the fence areas that show the original site.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Slide showing proposed condition seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are the three proposed conditions by the applicants. First one, for seventeen, our list. You are provided our copies.
Who would qualify that? The overall project, I would qualify that to be twenty-five individual fence areas.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the applicant, these three proposed conditions, so, zoning ordinance. That's up here, that's up here, I'm sure, James, it's still, yes, it's, it's minor, it's minor. I think that we don't have any problems, as long as it's minor changes, they were in the boundaries of the quest areas.
Twenty-five fence areas, twenty-five fence areas, ad kiln, on the original site. I haven't gotten any revised sheets, so I'm assuming that they're still good. We, the, um, we're, well, it's, dude, I don't think there's any dates on those sheets. Yeah, it's like, is it the one application? Yeah, it was one of the applications was, so. I guess, May nineteen, that day. How big? Not, I think eight. Yeah, I think they did the eighteen, maybe.
The submitted plans, uh, sheet C one zero one is dated.
Look at one oh three.
May sixteen.
And also, you just asked that they update this site plan to reflect that change on the northwest corner. So you're going to, if that, if you move towards approval, you would want the site plan.
That, conditions.
Yes.
Yes.
So that might change the site plan date, is all I'm saying, right?
Well, the changes should, we'd date on the site plan, date on the site plan on the sheet, C one oh three.
Right.
Which is also.
All right, so the current plan is May sixteen. That you want the fenced areas to reflect the same extent as on the one oh three dated May sixteen.
Footprint of the twenty-five individually fenced areas.
Except that it would be updated to reflect that change that you mentioned.
Small triangular area on personal and receiving, or, uh, personal number one five one dash zero six dash one hundred dash zero zero four dash zero zero. One thing's part of that, must. Exclusion areas for most of the panels designation.
FYI, that area, something was discussed. Those are, that's, it's also changed places.
On the, on the, what, where, where you go to?
Mr. Chair, you just want to start, like, to start from the beginning?
We still, we still haven't covered, we still had to read upon. Yeah, there's a three intervention period. On extension. I personally think it should stay the way it is. We've got, we've granted them, they have the authority for the one-year administrative extension and one-year extension to be approved by the planning. Correct. And all they have to do to comply with the regulation is start some construction within that two-year period. Right. So if they build a road, they can, they've started. You don't need another extension.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's some concern that the zoning ordinance requires, you know, one-year, uh, site plan approval, one-year extension, uh, through the zoning administrator. We're not, we are not sure that they have the authority to change anything with that and to otherwise combine those two and approve it as a condition. We are aware of Public Act two thirty-four, which, you know, essentially vests you to ten thousand dollars worth of construction. So obviously, we don't think we have the ability to go outside what the ordinance allows. There, we appreciate your comment on the timeline of these projects and fully aware of how they are very time, you know, consuming and getting in the mice of you and all that. So, but we don't think, after looking at the ordinance, that we can go beyond the scope of what the ordinance provides, if that makes sense.
So the basic agreement, agreement, line up versus state changes. Actually, you're happy with the rest of this.
Other condition?
Yes, so now you've discussed the three that they proposed for you to talk about. So now you may go back to your findings and start there, if it's, if you're ready to do that. I don't know if there's any other questions for the applicant, or for Mr. Tourist, or for myself. But if not, and you're ready to move forward?
I'd like to ask the question, yeah, okay.
Mr. Stewart could use the microphone, please. Are you aware of the state protective endangered species property? And what are you doing to mitigate any backup?
Yes, we've already done some wildlife assessments. And there's an ongoing consultation with M D N R and Eagle on any threatened endangered species in the area. None have been identified. We've also been consulting with U S Fish and Wildlife Services. So if there were at some point to be, you know, any indication of those species, then proper mitigation efforts would be implemented, to let none of them be identified.
For the rest of the day. Eastern on this, agents, like the space.
Yeah, so I mean, if those are things that come up throughout the studies, then we will work to avoid those areas. Also, we do practices which will still protect those species.
Yeah, and we continue to do, even after we start confronting it, you post monitoring and all that kind of stuff, which is required as part of the, the state consultation as well. So, so we go through a pretty rigorous process. Thank you. Okay, we're going to look at our findings. Let's, Chairman, findings first.
Mr. Chairman, then there's one change, general finding, where it refers to level three solar energy facility. It should read solar energy facility period. There's no photovoltaic, that's the old terminology. How that. Minor change.
So he's just referencing the general finding, the draft finding number one. It references the level three solar energy system, that is your old ordinance. So under our new ordinance, as I mentioned, that was adopted in January, I think we just call it a energy, solar energy facility.
Energy facility.
Solar energy facility, that correction is noted.
Any other corrections?
No, that's a general findings. No, that's a general findings.
There are thirty eight general findings of facts. Does anyone want to discuss any of them or were there additional findings to be added?
There are three additional findings. Number thirty nine, forty, and forty-one. You wish me to read them?
Please.
Uh thirty nine, planning commission finds that the applicant will enter into a role youth agreement. We would cover issues related to the youth and student vote, contribute to the construction operation facility. It's just the general findings. And forty, the planning commission finds that the applicant shall enter into a community host agreement for payment to Shboyd County, uh two thousand dollars per megawatt of the name-laden capacity of the project. You'd already agreed to that. It's just a general finding. And forty-one, the planning commission finds that the applicant shall furnish Shboyd County with a performance guarantee and not sufficient to cover the costs mutually agreed upon decommissioning plan. You've already granted that. It's just to our general findings. So the forty-one general findings.
Anything additional? Satisfied with these general findings? Findings affect under safety. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, please, uh, is there opportunity for the applicant uh discussing language in the draft findings affect that one that we've proposed?
Thanks, I'll be very quick, you know, pass it to the senior for wondering. No, on finding number twenty-eight, which is uh that the planning commission finds the applicant posts to you to utilize uh two species of evergreen white pine and white spruce, white spruce uh for the screening. Uh we would just pass um the uh, it was discussed right at the public hearing that you would use the species like that. So it just in case it's unavailable or there's an issue with that type of tree. If you could just, some like to say white pine, white spruce or similar species of tree. Just so that if there's an issue with disease, white pine sometimes, it's boosting issue or not growing. Just to be able, you can argue or read this, those are more species, because it's a small one, where you wanted to ask for another one. And with the two, we can keep it in there that it would be at least two species, which I think uh was discussed. At least two species, uh for example, white spruce or white or similar.
I had no problem, it was quite up.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. We can certainly do at least.
Sure, we want a two different species. I own a tree farm. If one species gets diseased, you wipe out the whole thing. So if you state or them two different species, I I don't really care what they are. Just something that's evergreen, best grown, thanks.
Yep. Yeah, and then I will mention another one uh regarding maximum decibels, so on page six, section, section B on page six.
Okay, the findings, we're not, we're not there yet.
We're the general findings.
The general finding, okay, and we can, yeah, we'll wait until that.
Okay, we'll have it. Twenty-one.
Other than changing the uh.
What the change to twenty?
The change to twenty-eight.
Okay, that one does findings. Under section seventeen, thirty-two, three. Uh A.
Most of the factors matter.
E.
Most of the factors matter than one A.
C.
The most of the factors matter than one A.
B.
Most of the math factor matter than one A.
Is this the one you had a problem with, Smear?
Does it?
Yeah. Those are way down here proposed. So the values there, four to nine and four to five, should actually read as fifty-three and four for the results of this.
Say that again?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the factors, they're right, it's here down in the map. Uh it shows, you know, the two values, project boundary, uh that the value at the nearest outer wall, the nearest dwelling. So the noise analysis, it concludes that the maximum uh noise level on the project boundary is actually fifty-three D V A from the maximum, so. Which are still on compliance authorities requirements, just changes to the actual values here.
Thank you. Rest of these listed here are all under, uh are all voluntary, which are.
Did you get F? You didn't get F.
Yes, cool.
Factors met under one A on this.
Okay. Findings under seventeen, thirty through six A are all voluntary and have already been agreed to by the applicant. Okay, findings affect on seventeen, thirty through seven. Those three in the.
That I didn't want A.
Okay.
There's a one. Make more than the applicant, application be increased, uh application that's site plan be approved. The general findings and the findings affect under seventeen, thirty-two, three and voluntary uh well, compliance with the seventeen, thirty. Here's a nineteen, twenty, sixteen, seventeen, thirty-two, sixteen uh of their application. Approved in their, I mean, uh to the factors of the, that is considered in their application. I support.
Thank you. Well, this is for based on finding under seventeen, thirty-two, three and seventeen, thirty-three, seven. Voluntary conditions agreed to under seventeen, thirty-two, six A. Those in favor?
Sorry.
Those opposed?
Bye.
Any other rumors? No, sir, from stats. Just, this is back there for? Yes, sir. Planning Commission comment? Any public comments? They know, close public comment? Well, the adjournment might be in our. We'll adjourn.